As you are hearing, we have a lot of work to do within the public mental health system that is underfunded. But again, I just want to say that the answer is to turn the money over to organizations that we know limit services in order to make money. My personal experience was that when I had my first cancers, my insurance company, which is, and my husband worked for Ford Motor, great insurance, but whenever I needed an operation, they went into second opinion. Went, got second opinion, my doctor said, "You should be on the table yesterday." Got the second opinion, said the same thing. And what did they say? "I want a third opinion." So they kept going out and out and out. I was running around, my husband was going crazy because we were supposed to be on the table. And you know, the feeling that you have with the insurance companies many times is that they'd rather I die so I didn't cost them any more money. And we don't want that in the public mental health system. So it is time now for all of us to rise up and to make our voices heard. And I just wanted to draw your attention to the list of your to-do list when you leave this forum today. We have three more people to talk. We have Ed Nicholson.
That's me.
All right. And we have Denise King and Bob McCreevy. So let's listen to them and then we will pull this together.
Before I came here at the, Ed Westland, in 83, I was born, when my dad, before I closed down my old house. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I don't know what you want to tell.
Oh, sorry. Before I came to Westland, September 20th, before my, my old house closed down, and I got this second house.
You like living in Westland?
Yeah, I was living in Westland. Before I, before I finished school in 2010, that's like, I got a job at the reset shop to make some money and do some, I was in community service for the first time. Well, he wasn't yet.
I'm just supporting you, buddy.
That's what I supported me.
Can I spark a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Let me move on. You've met Edward. Edward's my son and I'm very proud to be his father. A lot of the talk today has been about, you know, how we get services to the people that need them. And I think that's the most important thing that we need to realize. I am a businessman. I am a for-profit businessman. I'm also on 16 boards, committees, and commissions that do not pay a nickel. I'm very involved and I love what I do. I happen to be the treasurer of Friends of CLS. I'm also the vice chair of the Disabilities Committee for Mayor Wild for the City of Westland. My other boards are multiple business boards and whatnot. But when it comes down to common sense, really is what we're looking at here. Because common sense is, when a business is a for-profit business, it has to find ways of making money. It has to answer to the people that it is stockholders to. Those happen to be people that want to make, make money on it. I mean, this is the whole purpose for a for-profit business. When I run my business, I am there for business. I have to find ways of doing that, whether that's bringing in more people to my events or doing, selling more items or selling more things. In the case of insurance, we can't sell more things. It's a fixed income. So the only thing we can do is find ways of cutting costs. When we've done that, and we've all heard tonight for, today from multiple people, that the way that we've cut costs is by cutting labor costs. We either put less people in the job, so the job is less efficient. We either cut income, so people can't stick around. You know, a lot of people go into the healthcare with great intentions, but when they get there, they can't pay their own bills. When you can't pay your own bills, you have to find a way to make a living. I've been very, very lucky with myself since Edward was diagnosed autistic. And I swore that I would do whatever it took to pay the bills as long as it was legal. And I've managed to do that by driving truck, driving tow trucks, by running photo labs. My background is photography, excuse me, and business. And that's what I have done. I was vice president in charge of quality control for a little company called 3M. So I've been, been out there quite a bit and I've done a lot of different things. I happen to be very lucky right now and I own my own business. I'm happy to be standing at UAW because Rory Gamble is one of my supporters and supports my business. We put on automotive events in the communities that we do for free and they help us do this. We like to bring in a lot of group home people, a lot of different people to our events because they're free and they're fun and they're community done. But I think our biggest thing we have to look at is this, is that if we privatize insurance, we're profitizing insurance. And when you start doing that, the services are automatically going to go downhill. And my one minute is up and I think the timing is perfect. Thank you very much. And I think this young man is, if anybody's out there hiring, this guy walks a mile to work every day and gets there with a smile on his face and it doesn't matter if it's raining, snowing, or 10 degrees below zero out. He will not take a ride unless I beg him to let me drive him to work. But he gets there and he works for Judson Center in Royal Oaks. So we're very happy with the services that are out there between CLS, Judson Center, STEP, and multiple other organizations. Let's keep them operating efficiently and properly. Thank you.
Tough act to follow there. My name is Denise King and I'm with Community Opportunity Center. We provide policies to adults with disabilities. We have 24 different sites that we're supervising and about 85 people that we're supporting. And I felt compelled to come up and speak because I hear so much negativity right now and it's not, maybe negative, just heartfelt stories is what I'm hearing. It breaks my heart to hear what some of the families are going through. So we're not totally there in the mental health system, that we still have some work to do. But I wanted to share that there's a lot of positive things going on in the mental health system too. I've been in the field for 36 years and I see people leading just absolutely wonderful lives in our corporation. People who have started in, in group home settings and are living very independently. We've got a family member here right now. Andy Moniz was CLS and her sister and brother-in-law are here to hear what's going on. She's now living in a home that used to be her mother's and father's home. Terry Moore is, is her sister. And just gets a little bit of staffing nowadays. So a lot of progress, so there's a lot that we still have to be very proud of. But I do recognize from the stories that have been shared, we certainly do have a long way to go to, to improve the system. But I will say, and I think everybody knows here, with privatization, everyone's looking at the bottom line. And with the mental health system, I really do feel, and I see some of the directors here, we've got Paul Newman here, we've got Isadora Kane here, and of course Tom Martin. It's so nice to have folks here from the mental health system. These are people that listen to us. And as Tom pointed out, in a private enterprise, you're not going to have people that listen. Direct care supports have been very difficult to, to secure. And I think CLC has worked very hard to, to get some just dynamic people. But we've had a supplement, probably about $5 an hour we pay into that. But Tom has listened. We've, we've had, in January, we had a dollar increase to the staff. That's not going to happen in a private enterprise. We just got a cost of living increase and that's going to help us with some of the needs that we have in the corporation. Again, if we were in a private enterprise, those things wouldn't happen. So, and I do see, with the directors that are here, we're so pleased, I'm working with people that have Parkinson's, schizophrenia, Alzheimer's, dementia, Hodgkin's disease, cancer. When we have needs in the system and we need extra staffing or support, I go to those directors, those people are the case managers, and we're enabling those supports. Again, to those that are having problems, I know there's still things that we need to do, but I'm grateful for those that are here and working with the system that does listen to us. So I just wanted to share some positives. So thank you.
My name is Bob McCreevy. I have a mentally disabled son. For two years in a row, Judy and I have answered the call and we have gone to Lansing to testify before the House and the Senate Appropriations Subcommittee. In the House this year, there were probably 400 people there testifying. There was one main room and they had three backup rooms, but there were so many people there. We watched a little girl come up and a walker to testify. And she was so handicapped that it took two people to help her get out of the walker and get her seated at a table before the microphone. If you had only half a heart to watch the testimony that you watch, you would be in tears in these meetings. Now, I am sure that before we got out of that room, that the powers in control there, either hit the delete button or the wrong file with our testimony. Nothing changed. So I have been assured here today that our testimony will not be deleted. It will be a permanent record that they will have to live with over there in Lansing. Now, they may ignore it, but they are not going to be able to delete it. I have a son in the community mental health. He has lived independently for 30 years. Due to cuts from Lansing, he is now back in our home. Governor Snyder and the legislature are hurting the disabled. My son was in a portable supports shared apartment program with a 90% success rate. He was stable beyond all expectations for 12 years. He received treatment that our estimate was, it was costing about $1,800 a year and he enjoyed a $4,200 per year housing subsidy. Budget cuts from Lansing closed a perfect program and dumped 30 recipients to the street. Why would you propose a perfect program that saves money? Our son is now being treated in the revolving door of court ordered commitments and premature releases. The third time this year that he was hospitalized, he was so sick both mentally and physically that he almost died. He spent five days in intensive care. Closing a perfect portable supports program, which treated our son for $1,800 per year versus $180,000 to date in hospital treatments and court ordered hospitalizations, sounds like we need a CPA in Lansing that can add. Where is the savings? Governor Snyder's budget plan cut the budget to CMH, Community Mental Health, caused CMH to fail, using the planned failure for an excuse to privatize and integrate the mental health funds. Budget cuts hurt our mentally ill son. The result of Governor Snyder's budget cuts, he lost affordable housing, lost a $4,200 housing subsidy, back in our home after 30 years, closed a perfect program, lost the CLS workers, community living support workers that really do the actual work of health, taking care of patients and like the nurses aides, lost transportation, denied treatment, and decomped 75% below his baseline. They left him for one time without going near him for three months. We were out of town. We didn't have to worry about him because it was a perfect program and they could reach us 24/7 if they needed to. And they didn't go near him, let him decomp 75% below his base. This was about two years ago. We still have not been able to bring this back and get him back up and regain that 75%. What they have done is just created more helplessly homeless people by dumping people to the street. Governor Snyder's plan to privatize, integrate the $2.2 billion mental health budget, cut 40% off the top. Oh, what a savings. Turn the remainder over to private industry, the insurance companies, to take their cut. A third-party profiteer, probably another 30%. So with my kind of fuzzy math, if I add up 40% and 30%, that's 70%. That's not leaving much to turn over to an insurance company that's going to provide the services that we have now. That's quite a, quite a budget cut there. I am afraid to die and leave my son at the mercy of a broken mental health system, a system that the insurance companies are going to use for, are going to use for profit. It'll be a profit-driven situation. Now, there's a real simple solution to fixing this. It's easy. And when you look at what is happening in Lansing and you have only one party that has total control and we have a broken government, all that we have to do is go out and vote in our own best interest and change what is happening there and create a check and balance, which is the way our precious government is supposed to work in this country. This whole problem can be fixed in one election. It's up to us. And if we don't do it, it's our fault if we let it continue.
And again, transferring money just in another place does not mean that you are integrating care. It's not the same thing. Okay, we're almost done. We have Bob Sisler who would like to say a few words. And following him, Tom has asked for the chance from the authority to also say a few words and then you will close us out. Very good.
What we know is that we have a system. A system that is creating profit for private corporations. That sounds great, doesn't it? But what we have to realize, that they're taking our tax dollars to reap every dime they can get to make themselves profitable. What is wrong with us? I've got to ask that. What is wrong with us? Don't we see what's going on? Everyone here needs to go tell their mothers, their fathers, their sisters, their brothers, their cousins, yes, your neighbors, and even your enemies, that there's a problem out here. We have to get out and vote. We have to do something about it right now. Our society, on a micro level, is falling apart. On a macro level, it's falling apart. And why? Because we're allowing these politicians to dictate to us things that are not good for us. You know, when I go around and people say, "Oh, you have all these social programs and you're a socialist." You know what I point to? I have to point to Canada because last, a couple summers ago, we were, we went around this country and we were showing this movie called The Healthcare Movie. And with it, it compared the Canadian government and their healthcare system with our healthcare What happens in Canada is people are concerned about each other. You have a wealthy person who says, "As long as I can have healthcare, my neighbor can have a healthcare, we'll have a healthier society." How does that affect us? You know, we hear about prisons, we hear about people in the streets, we hear about homelessness, we hear about bedbugs. How does that affect us? Well, I'm here to tell you, if we stay focused on the right things, we can make the right changes. You take Chicago and Toronto, the same kind of population, the same kind of diversity. Do you know what the murder rate of Toronto is? About 50 a year. Why? Because what they've done is when people come up, they begin to realize that they're part of the society where you're going to be taken care of and there's someplace you can get help versus all the things we've heard. You go for help, you go to this person, they tell you to go to that person. Oh, you go to this one, they tell you something else. We have to take and say, "We're tired of these people, tell us to go somewhere else." Every time they're taking the charge for talking to you and getting nothing done for the person who needs help. So when we wake up in this society and say, "We want, we have brothers and sisters," when we wake up and say, "I'm concerned about every American." And I'm concerned about my American brother and sister is doing today and tomorrow, we will have a better society. So get out and vote, make sure it happens, and please, get everyone you know, again, even your enemies, get them out to vote. Thank you.
One other person came forward and said that they thought they had filled out their cards. Sandy Baker, you wanted to say a couple of words, and then Tom, and then Brad.
I'm sorry, I'm not a very good public speaker. But you've heard the expression, "Don't mess with the she-bear in her cove." Well, that's what you're messing with if you mess with me and my daughter. I would like to say that I, I very much convey with that first lady that spoke. I thought I was the only one that had a handicap like her daughter. When my daughter doesn't feel well or sick, she doesn't pinch, she'll take your hand and just put it where she needs to put it, you know, to let you know that it hurts. I ask you, please, don't take this money from her. I don't know what you're going to use it for, maybe for the roads or to give it to somebody who's come over the border, I don't know. And maybe you think I'm mean because I said that, but we've already seen how they've given money to those people. I want to represent the Lord here. I hope I've said nothing to offend anybody. I am a Republican, usually I vote Republican, and they can do a great thing to impress me if they leave that money where it is now. And thank you very much.
I want you to take note of the representatives here. Representative Love had to leave. We should have another commitment, which we have Representative Geist that are still here, Representative Darlene who are still here, and Senator Hood. Remember these names, these are good people standing up for what we want. Give them a round of applause. Again, I'm struggling with my voice, so please forgive me. One that's really important, Denise, who got up a few minutes ago, reminded me of something, of when we walk to talk, good things happen for people. At your Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority, we have made value-based decisions. We generated over $56 million of new Medicaid revenue that have come into our community. Where have those dollars gone? As Denise pointed out, last year, your local board voted to give a dollar an hour increase to direct care staff, who pointed out here today that people can make more money flipping hamburgers than taking care of some of the most vulnerable citizens. It wasn't new money that came from Lansing or the feds specifically for this purpose. It was a value-based decision by our board. And that's happened in McComb County, it's happened in Oakland County. Those are dollars that we had discretion on where they were going. In order to give a $1 increase to the direct care staff in Detroit Wayne County, it's an $18 million expenditure. That is a value-based decision. And one that Denise does not know, is our board just made a decision to increase that wage by another dollar an hour in Detroit Wayne County. Because that's where our values are. We know where the rubber hits the road and where services delivered by the men and women at work. The other one that we did, the legislature passed a few years ago, a piece of legislation that said we had to integrate Sultan's View Services into the public mental health system. Here in Detroit Wayne County, we had two separate agencies, one for Alton County and one for the city of Detroit. The law was to bring them together, to integrate care, because that is of value, folks. We knew need to integrate care. But by doing that in Detroit Wayne County, we saved over $3 million of administrative costs. Now, do you think that money went into the Tom Watkins bonus pool? No, you wouldn't do that. What we did is we reinvested that money back into our community to enhance and improve services. So while we strive to integrate care, which is the right thing to do, it has to be driven by human need, not human greed. And again, I implore you, because I know your hearts are there, but to tell your colleagues when they're voting, to vote as though someone's that they love will be impacted by this, because ultimately they will. Thank you.
Just a few more minutes here. Would you legislators like to say a couple of words about your feelings from this event?
The system is broken. The system doesn't work. Testimony here shows that. So how, as Bob was saying, how do, how do we correct this? Your vote. Call your legislator. Not just on the day, and it's important that you do it on the days when there are bills up, when there's a committee hearing, but call on those days when it's not. Call every day. Call us every day. Bug us, bug us. Because as Tom says, somebody's life depends on it. So bug us to death. Make sure that no one in the legislature can say, "Oh, I didn't know." Because they've gotten plenty of emails and plenty of calls and everybody in their office, whoever your legislator is, should know your name backwards and forwards. And if we can get everyone to do that, because that's where the impact comes in, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And when they look at running for political office, whomever it may be, they look at votes. And you carry that in your back pocket. You carry that vote. That goes from your local elections to your state elections, to your county elections, to your presidential election. The system is broken. Help us with the tools that we need to go up there and get it changed. It's not going to change overnight, because it didn't take it overnight for us to get here. For years ago, when they closed the facilities, we've got to start somewhere and begin just scratching at it and building upon that so that we can get the proper healthcare, first of all, healthcare, but mental healthcare, education. We were talking earlier about when I was in school, we had nurses, we had counselors, we had people in the school system that weren't just actually in the classroom, but they interacted with us every day. So if Jane wasn't feeling well that day, or she was not her jovial self that she usually was, or she usually is, then that person would say, "Wait a minute, what's wrong with Jane? Jane, come here, let me talk to you." And so it might be a whole bunch of issues going on. It could be issues at home. It could be behavioral issues. It could be whatever it was, but it got recognized as soon as it could be recognized, so that now she could get the care that she needed. So we need to put and invest back into the system, if you will. Those safety nets, the things that could be, you've heard people come up and talk about, you've heard some people come up, they want to be independent. They want to live in the home by themselves. They want to go to work and come home and be productive, just like everybody else. But we don't give them the, the, the resources to do that. We don't even teach how to ride a bus. And we'll go to small, let's walk down the street, make sure that you can recognize a stop sign or a, a walk sign or don't walk sign or what the rules, anyway, thank you very much. We are there with you. I can, I'm not going to speak for the other two, but I know I'm going to speak for the other two, but we're here. But we've got to get everybody else to realize, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. If we invest our money, we spend about $40,000 a year to house an inmate in our correctional facilities. So why don't we take that $40,000 as those numbers that, what was it, was talking, talking about the numbers Bob was talking about? Bob was talking about the numbers. Let's take that $40,000, and let's put it on the front end. Well, we don't have those issues with people being incarcerated because of all the other social issues that we run into. Anyway, thank you very much, and thank you for your stories. Let's go out and tell these stories, and make sure that people know. So, call your legislators, email them, make sure that they know. Come to our office, we'll take you, we'll walk with you. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more with Senator Hood. And if you can't get to Lansing, because that 90-minute drive will be a pain, make sure that you reach out to us in the district when we are not, on the days that we're not in session. I know, I have told multiple people, I will come meet you where you are, and I know other colleagues will do have that same philosophy. I want to thank everyone who spoke for being so incredibly brave to stand up and share your stories. And I'm one of those people who cries at a pin drop, so forgive me for a second. Because I didn't ask these family members ahead of time to share their stories, I won't share their stories specifically, but some of the things that a couple of you said have touched on my family or my extended family as well. So, from that personal, that right here part, I get it. And so, thank you for sharing those. And don't just share those with us, share them with your legislators on all levels of government. And this isn't about party, because at the end of the day, or actually, at the beginning of the day, we all represent every single one of the people in our districts. It's not about whatever letter might be behind your name. It's about the fact that it is our jobs to represent the roughly 90,000 people in each of our districts, at least for our House districts, it's much larger for the Senate districts. And this is about people. And I've always said, I've always maintained, that just like in our households, just like in our personal lives, we invest in and we pay for the things that we value, we should be doing that on a broader societal level. So, when it comes to making sure that we, as a state, are investing in the people that we value, and making sure that the people who are charged with providing the services have the tools, the training, the information that they need to help make sure that our community members are whole, because it doesn't just affect the, you all know, it doesn't just affect the person with the issue, I don't want to say illness, because that makes it sound so, it doesn't sound, it makes it sound, of course, negative. It's about helping them get through and survive what they're going through. It affects the entire family.